Good evening Wareham and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a roll call please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, present tonight is myself, Jared Chadwick. Also present with me is Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Slavin, Mr. Bessie, Ms. Wertz, we have Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Bowen as well.
Thank you very much. And it's your turn there, Mr. Chadwick.
Oh geez. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Thank you. Residents' comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes and there will be no more than ten minutes of that per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to address this board? Please raise your hand. I see none. We move on to announcements, please. Ms. Wertz.
Well, good evening, everyone. We're getting close to town meeting. So I'm hoping to see a number of you there. I also wanted to say that there is a video out right now and you can access it through WCTV and it is three of our committee members talking about the article changes in, especially in the planning area that are going to be put up for vote at town meeting and it would be helpful if you'd like to take a look at that. It's about a fifteen-minute video, but it's, it's good.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, any announcements, sir?
Let me just unmute myself, sorry. Yeah, we're, we're getting, we're getting close to that wonderful time of year again where all the little kiddos get to go out and ring doorbells and, and get some candy. You know, I, I just want to encourage everybody to enjoy the time, but you know, let's be cognizant of the things around us and be safe and and have a good time out there. You know, we, we don't want to ruin good times with, you know, having to deal with problems and issues. So just, you know, be careful when you're out there. If you're not participating and you're on the road driving, please be careful of all the little kiddos running around and be extra cautious that night because it is a fun night. It's a night that I enjoy myself going out with my kids and, and having fun, but I just, you know, caution everybody on both sides, whether you're participating or not. Be safe, have fun, do the right things and enjoy the time.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Ron, you giving up those donations too?
Mr. Slavin, announcements?
Sorry. Let's see, Route six and twenty-eight, there was no meeting last week. So the next update will be next week for the public. Want to thank the Elks. They had a party for, I think it was Baby Pantry, Damian's, Turning Point and the YMCA in which they awarded additional monies that they had raised as well. It was a very nice event. Representative Gifford was there as well and it was, they gave away from five to seven thousand dollars each organization over and above the original money that they had, that the Elks Foundation given out. Cross. Okay, on the, if you notice, there's a partial fence up on Merchant's Way. This is something that's been worked on back and forth. Just to let you know, the state originally, MBTA rail wanted the town to actually pay to put that fence up with the idea of allowing us to have a gate crossing as well. And what happened was myself and Mr. Buck would discuss it and my suggestion was that the state's going to have to do it whether they like it or not. So let's just hold out and see what happens. So we saved ourselves somewhere close to three hundred thousand dollars in expense by not going ahead and doing it and letting the state basically force them to do it on their own. Just so everybody knows, I believe the fence is going to go eventually all the way down to the Cape Flyer, the fencing that starts as well for safety reasons. And just so everybody understands, the property from the railroad tracks, before the tracks, all the way down to the water belongs to the railroad. You know, so when you're down there, you're trespassing. Technically, you're not allowed to be there. Let's see what else we got today. The festival that we just had recently with the OBA, I just want to let people know that the car show that we ran for two years now, we'll continue to run that next year as well, myself and Paul Girard. And I think that's that's it for announcements.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I have a couple. First one is I met with Mr. Barry the other day from Town Tavern and Tap of Wareham. They are a little behind schedule, but they will be opening very soon. As you all know, I have a weird obsession with lobster, mac and cheese. So I'm getting a little over excited. But just an FYI for everyone, Saturday, October twenty-eighth and Sunday, October twenty-ninth, from twelve to four at thirty-one, thirty-eight Cranberry Highway, they will be having a job fair. They're looking for line cooks, bartenders, servers, hosts and busters. All right, and two more. So this upcoming Thursday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, is Wear Purple Day and it is in support of Spirit Day as a sign of support for LGBTQ youth and to speak out against bullying. And hold on, I almost had it. Never mind. Hold on, give me one second here. All right, also, October nineteenth, uh, Jesus, October nineteenth is Purple Thursday. You may be wondering what Purple Thursday is. The color purple represents domestic violence awareness. The third Thursday of October is now nationally known as Purple Thursday. Observe during Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's a day where you can show your support for domestic violence survivors by wearing purple clothing, nail polish socks, ties, hats, scarves and more. So in other words, if you guys are planning anything for Thursday, make sure you're wearing purple. That's it.
Thanks.
That couple of sandies sending me to the garage?
Um, I have a couple. On the town website, the sewer consultant's presentation from last week has been posted. They also are having what I would call an informational meeting on Thursday, I believe, at six-thirty. I think it's in the auditorium, I'm not sure. But the, they are trying to get the word out and have people come and ask questions about the presentation that will be made to the town meeting. You waving your hand at me? Yes?
Yes, it's, it's Wednesday.
That's Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. So it's tomorrow night?
At six.
At six in the town hall auditorium?
Uh, room twenty-seven.
Room twenty-seven, okay, so, oh, okay, I got it all wrong. Thank you, Mr. Bessie, for correcting that. Again, if you don't have the time to attend that meeting, I urge you to watch the presentation that's been posted on the town website. And I would also remind everybody that the Veterans Parade will be held on November eleventh. We are still looking for people to participate and we certainly are hoping that all of the veterans in the town of Wareham will turn out and have the town thank you for your service and have you have lunch. We have
We apologize, ma'am, chairperson.
Yes.
The, they originally had posted it for room twenty-seven. But they did not know it was unavailable for them. So it is in the auditorium. So let's just go through this one more time.
One more time.
October eighteenth, six to eight P M. In the Wareham Town Hall Auditorium. It's a meeting regarding sewer Article twenty-six, headworks and clarifier upgrade project. And you can come, ask questions and hopefully get some, some additional answers that you may be seeking. So I'm glad they're doing it.
Thank you for your clarification. Okay. In the audience, we have, if, if you're Carolyn McClure or Judy Jinson-Wriggle, please raise your hand. David McClure, Noah, would you let the, the name David McClure in and is Judy Jinson-Wriggle here? Please raise your hand. If you see her show up later on, let me know, please. Carolyn McClure, would you identify yourself for the record? We have here on the agenda that you want to be a member of the Council on Aging. So we'd like to hear from you. Identify yourself, please, and let us know what you're up to. You're muted. You're muted.
Been a while since I've done a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Good evening and thank you very much for the invitation to be here this evening. My name is Carolyn McClure. I have been a full-time Wareham resident for about ten and a half years, but had a house in onset for twenty-five years before that. So I've been here for quite a while. I'm currently involved with the Council on Aging. I have been teaching a class there for the last couple of years. And I also work Monday afternoons and sometimes another day during the week in the office answering the phones. I am very interested in what is going on in the Council on Aging and I hope to be appointed to the board.
Thank you. Do any of my members have any questions of Ms. McClure? Please raise your hand. Mr. Slavin?
Just want to thank Carolyn for stepping up.
Thank you.
Carolyn, why don't you tell us what you teach?
I teach card making. And I have a class of about fifteen, between twelve and fifteen people once a month. And we come in and make greeting cards and we're on a campaign to get people to send cards instead of texts and emails because you can't put a text on your mantle. So everybody seems to enjoy the class and we're having a good time with it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Ms. McClure? I will accept a motion, Mr. Chadwick.
I move to appoint Carolyn McClure to the Council on Aging as a member with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
There's a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is any further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Carolyn, the paperwork is in the office of the Select Board on the second floor of Town Hall, third floor of Town Hall. But you have to have done the, the open meeting law and the ethics training as well.
Right, I, I do have the length of that and should be able to get it done tomorrow. So once I get that done, I will stop over. Maybe Friday. No, you're not open on Fridays, right?
We're not open on Fridays.
Okay.
Yeah, we will try and get the paperwork signed for, for you to be able to take downstairs to the clerk, but if it's Monday, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You too. Thank you.
Is Judy Jinson-Wriggle here? I see her. She is not here. What's your pleasure? Do you want to skip over? And she would be a new appointment.
No, go over it.
Oh, I think she's already been approved by the Council on Aging, so.
She's been recommended by them, yes.
So why don't we just go ahead, please?
I think you have a tradition of, of trying, the Select Board asking questions on it. And I don't think that's something that's worth breaking at this point.
I agree.
I, I would say that we get in touch with her. This, she's got some very in, interesting stuff in her bio, including that she has a therapy dog that she actually brings occasionally over to
Yes, she does.
the COA. So she's well-known and she's been, she's been involved for quite a while, I believe. And, and I just hope she's not here because we didn't notify her correctly and not that there's something.
Notify everybody, Ms. Wertz, so.
Oh, well, I hope nothing else has gotten in the way, not anything seriously, serious.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll put this on the next agenda. We have a seven fifteen hearing. Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to ask you to make a motion to approve some minutes, which is on the second page, I'm eleven B and there are two sets of minutes. One is a regular set of minutes and the other one is the executive session minutes from last week, which need to be coped with. Mr. Chadwick?
Sounds good. I move to approve the meeting minutes for the Select Board Meeting of nine twenty-six, twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those minutes. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yep.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero, five zero zero, it is done. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion on the executive session minutes, please?
Yes, I move to approve the meeting minutes, approve and release the meeting minutes for the executive session that was on ten, ten, twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded to approve and release those minutes. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Chadwick, I thought you were going to be abstaining on that one?
I can approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, it is now seven fifteen. Mr. Chadwick, would you please make a motion to open the hearing? And Mr. Bastian, would you raise your hand, please, to be let into the meeting? And if you have somebody else with you, would he or she raise his or her hand, please?
I move to open the hearing at seven fifteen P M. To grant a new license, a new Class Two license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Law to A-one Unlimited LLC DBA, A-one Unlimited LLC at fifty-eight Sandwich Road in Wareham, Mass. Zero two five seven one.
For the record, I'm going to correct your motion to be A-one Auto Unlimited LLC DBA, A-one Auto Unlimited. It was a scripturner's error that it didn't make that. All of the paperwork is in that name. Is there a second to the motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on opening the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Bowen, I'm going to ask for a quick blessing. The advertisement was placed correctly. The, the documentation for Mr. Bastian is all in order, but on the agenda, it doesn't say to A-one Auto Unlimited, we've left the word auto out. Is it okay to proceed with this hearing?
You left the word auto out, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I think we're you didn't spell it O-T-T-O or something like that? I, I think you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Okay. Um, Mr. Bastian, it's nice to see you again. I saw you last week. Would you identify yourself for the record, please, and let us know what it is that you're looking to do, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Bastian. I am the owner-operator over here. I just actually purchased a long-time garage, I guess it was, in your guys' town. I'm kind of new to the area over here, but I have been running my business for five years. I mainly do towing and I bought the garage with intent to open an auto repair slash sales and service. Um, that's basically, you know, entails obviously fixing cars, selling a few cars. Um, you know, we're looking to get into that type of business. Um, I'm transitioning some from the towing and trying my hand in the repair. So I did come across this, this building and it seemed like a good purchase and the town seems like a great town to be involved with. So I'm more than happy to become a good, you know, helper in this town and person that you guys can go to to kind of have service and things like this. I want to become like you know, decent in the community here with everything. So that's pretty much what we're looking to do over there. Nothing crazy. Just basic sales and service.
Thank you. Could you explain who your partner is, sir?
Okay, so I have a family member. It's a family-run business. My uncle, he's a seventy-four-year-old veteran. Um, he is basically a silent partner as much we'll call it, but he is a partner. Um, he is a great guy. He has a great background. Um, he's, we're very close. I would probably call him, you know, like dad versus uncle. So he's been with me since day one and, and we're growing at a great rate. And yeah, we're looking to, we are, we did have a location in New Bedford and we just outgrew it. And we're just looking to flourish somewhere new. And what's better than Wareham?
Thank you. Do any of my members have any questions of Mr. Bastian? Please raise your hand. Mr. Bessie?
Good evening. How are you tonight? Uh, just, just a couple of questions for you. How big of a tow operation do you currently operate?
I have two flatbed Ram trucks.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, it's nothing huge. I don't tow for the city or state yet. I'm actually family members with the Murphys. Everybody knows the Murphys. They've been here forever. Um, I'm, I'm just looking more or less to service my own vehicles, my customer vehicles with the tow trucks. Maybe down the road, I would intend on doing something with the town or the state. I just haven't gotten that far yet.
Um, and it doesn't look or sound like you have any experience in the sales and service industry yet. Is that accurate?
Actually, no, I grew up in the auto body and sales end of it. My family owned an auto body and sales, everything. My mother was kind of like the jack of all trades, we'll call it. We're all time Dorchester people. So I grew up around cars and trucks my whole life. Um, so I, I've kind of been into it. I'm actually ASE certified as well as with wiring. It's called twelve-volt certification. So I have more than a hobby, we'll call it a passion for vehicles.
Any other questions, Mr. Bessie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from my board members? Okay. Yes, Mr. Slavin?
Uh, how many vehicles are we going to allow? Or is there asking for to be on display?
It's on, he's got twenty-three on his application.
Uh, where are they going to put the twenty-three? Is it laid out at all?
No, and Mr. Bastian, could you explain, did you go to the building department and speak with Mr. Turner about a site plan review if it was necessary?
Um, I have and they have approved everything so far. Um, we're probably going to display just roughly to give you an idea. I'd say about half that number or so out front and anything else would be in the rear of the building, in the backyard. We just want to make sure we're covering our bases on what types of vehicles and how many here. And this license has always had twenty-three vehicles at this location previously, and that's for many years from what I found out.
Mr. Slavin, I'm going to follow up on your question if you don't mind. The building is sixteen feet away from the main road. So well, how are you going to be displaying vehicles in front of the building?
Uh, we're not really planning on putting too many on the front, ma'am. We're gonna maybe park one or two that are really, you know, like the nicer eye-catching vehicles, we'll call it. And then I actually have what's, I guess, is a street that I own part of that wraps onto the side and does go down behind. So I guess they had parked them like uh, one in front of another before, but I'm going to kind of lay them diagonal. So I'll be able to fit quite a few. They won't all be on the road like an eyesore. They'd be mostly on the side of the building and I, I believe that's how they had them from everything I've investigated before.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
I'm just looking at the I know the site. So most of the, most of the cars are going to be in the back.
Yeah, there's actually a building photo and it has one car in front and the rest of them are on the side of the building.
Yeah, it's, and it goes back and there's an open lot with a house behind it and stuff.
Right.
Um, my only concern is again, you're, you're going to have stuff out there and it's, I don't believe it's paved per se. I think it's
It's dirt.
Yeah, so be a little concerned about, you know, oils and gas and stuff like that. I don't, well, we don't get into it, but I don't think the building has a oil trap, you know, for change of oil and stuff in there, but that's up to the special services to make sure and the fire department and police. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Bastian? Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to speak on behalf of the petitioner? Please raise your hand. If there's anybody in the audience who chooses to speak against the petitioner, please raise your hand. Mr. Chadwick, do you see any?
I'm looking right now and I do not see anything.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, then I would ask for a motion, Mr. Chadwick.
Uh, to close and then vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. I move to close the hearing to grant a new Class Two license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter one forty of the Massachusetts General Law to A-one Auto Unlimited LLC DBA, A-one Auto Unlimited LLC at fifty-eight Sandwich Road in Wareham, Mass. Zero two five seven one.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I, I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind saying that no car could be stored, could be displayed in front of the building. It could, it could be to the side and even with the front of the building. I'm worried about a sixteen-foot setback, to be honest with you.
No, we're not. You're going to have to have some kind of a handicap park in the front or on the side for customers.
Right, but, but for display purposes, that's what I'm worried about.
I'm, I'm concerned about both, actually, but that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a very tight, it's very tight to the street.
Yes, it is.
All right, um, there's a motion, motion to
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, the hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion.
All right, I move to grant Class Two license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter one forty, MGL, to A-one Auto Unlimited LLC DBA, A-one Auto Unlimited LLC at fifty-eight Sandwich Road in Wareham, Mass. Zero two five seven one.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Slavin? Um, will you second it for discussion, sir?
I think we're on.
Right, second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So my only concern is that because of the number of display and parking issue and handicap issue, uh, it may trigger a site plan review. Possibly, number one. And number two, uh, again, you know, complying with a setback and everything else, you still might have to go before the special services to get approved. So I put that just condition and that's all that, if it does require it, that he gets that approval and so.
Mr. Chadwick or Mr. Bessie, are you willing to accept that? As part of your motion?
So moved.
I'm seconded.
Thank you.
The only reason I asked for that is the layout doesn't show any of it. So we're, we're approving something with all the, what I consider a proper layout.
Okay, so so stated, Mr. Slavin, please?
I just stated that if, if required, it might require, you know, from the special services or possibly planning board if there's a site plan review, so the license is contingent upon either one of those things turning up. You know, getting approval.
Okay, and I, I know that he did speak with Mr. Turner, but that is part of the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion to grant?
One second, please.
Yep.
I'm just doing a street view of it so I can just clarify the
Yeah, the, 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 the thing that we have, the JC Engineering from a while ago, shows a sixteen-foot setback. Yeah, sixteen feet between the building and Sandwich Road, which is a highway.
Yes, but I think what he's talking about is the, the cars won't be, you know, with the rear to the building, they would be side by side, parallel to it. you know, with the rear to the building, they would be side by side, parallel to it, just for verification.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I go for a roll call vote on the motion to grant. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
To Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is granted with those um, conditions. Mr. Bastian, I'm gonna ask that you go back to Mr. Turner tomorrow or the next day whenever you can and just double check to make sure that you do not require a site plan review, okay?
Okay, ma'am, and sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right, you too as well.
Yep, take care.
Bye bye now.
Goodbye. Um. The petitioner of three articles was invited. I don't see her in the audience, so we will wait. May I have a motion, please, Mr. Chadwick on eight B, a donation?
All right, I move. I move to approve a donation in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars from Rain Car Wash LLC to uh, the police department.
Should be accept, sir. I know, yeah, to accept them. Is there a second to the motion to accept the donation?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve an extremely generous donation to the police department from Rain Car Wash. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Slaven?
Just to comment, they sent off to most of the residents, you know, a little coupon for a free car wash for the and also for a special rate for the monthly, like a one month program. I did go ahead a couple of days ago and put Sandy's car through the car wash rather than my own, of course, and uh, it came out really well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the donation?
Highly recommend them.
Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes, it looks like Mrs. Sullivan got a kiss on the cheek, by the way.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much. We'll send the letter out tomorrow. Um, to, to Mr. Chadwick, could you go to E, please?
All right. Yes. All right, I move to approve and accept, uh, excuse me, approve the opt out and reduction fees application for curbside billing fiscal year twenty-four in the amount of five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that opt out and reduction fee. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Now, uh, we will go to item eight C and D and we won't vote to do either of those until after we've had an explanation of both. Mr. Chadwick, could I have, well, let me explain. Um, we have two applications in front of us. One from the Wareham Village Association for the Christmas Parade, which has been a um, a stalwart, um, fun thing to do in the town for many, many years. It, the application is for December second, two thousand twenty-three. At the same time, we have an application from Wareham Committee for the Homeless for a five K walk run um, on twelve-two, the same day with a rain date of twelve-three. I did try and reach the petitioner today after I talked with the police department. The police department would be unwilling to sign off on two things at the same time on the same day. It would tie up Main Street for more than four and a half hours and with that, we're just not comfortable in doing that. Um, I did reach out to the people running the, the five K walk run and suggested that they um, ask for the, not the, yeah, it would be the ninth. Um, I called two different numbers and I sent an email to the email address and have not gotten a response. So what I think I'd like you to do is think about okaying that for the ninth, if that would be okay, then they don't have to do it, but do you understand that our problem? That's, okay. All right, Mr. Chadwick, go for it.
All right, uh, I move to uh, approve the Wareham Village Association Christmas Parade uh, with the use of town property for twelve-two, twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. With any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick? Let's try the ninth, I think.
You want to use it?
Do the ninth and the tenth, that would be.
Should be the tenth slash eleventh, right? Or the ninth and, the ninth and tenth.
It would be nine and ten, wouldn't it?
Yeah, cuz the second, yeah, the nine, ninth and tenth.
So.
Alan's got a finger up.
Yeah.
I do, I have a question too.
Yes, okay.
Why don't, why don't we make the suggestion, either they reapply, obviously, or we make the motion uh, for any date acceptable by the police department? Cuz they may not wanna do it on the, a week from the, the second, they may wanna do it earlier.
I, I would recommend that we wait until we hear back from them to discuss, even if they can orchestrate any other days.
Okay.
I don't, I don't wanna set dates for someone without having their approval first.
Okay, that's fine by me. I did try and reach out.
That's fine. I just, I understand getting volunteers, so that's, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. Um. We do have four articles that we have not yet voted on. The petitioner for three of them is not here. You did uh, vote to release the minutes from the executive session of last week when we talked about the union contracts, which would be article number five on the fall town meeting warrant. Um, I would ask for a motion to approve or recommend, recommend favorable action to the town meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to recommend uh, favorable action to the town meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. This recommended favorable action five zero zero. Um, I guess we can hold off to the end of the meeting and hope that the petitioner shows up. I do, however, want to have Mr. Chadwick have the opportunity to weigh in on article on any articles that he was not here for, but specifically for article twenty-six, which is the sewer article. Ms. Wertz and myself were the um, favorable action votes, so I will make the motion to reconsider our vote. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reconsider. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider our vote? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now, um, do you choose to discuss this or do you wanna just make a motion, Mr. Chadwick? Uh, the one who was not here, yeah.
I'm fine with that motion.
Okay, could you make a motion for favorable recommendation, please?
Yes, uh, I move uh, for favorable, favorable recommendation uh, on the construction cost for WPCF projects, clarifiers and headworks upgrades.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to recommend favorable action? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
No.
Mr. Slaven?
Epstein.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
And myself, yes. Two, two, one is the new vote. Is there any other article that we've taken action on that any one of you would like to weigh in on the money? Or do you choose to change your recommendation on any one of them? No? Okay. Then I guess we will.
Actually. Yes, uh, number fourteen.
Number fourteen. Number fourteen is the, um, all right, I make a motion to uh, reconsider the vote for favorable action on article fourteen. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reconsider our vote. All those in favor, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Sure.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yep.
And myself, yes. It is reconsidered. Mr. Chadwick?
All right, uh.
Can we uh, can we let the, can we let the public know what article fourteen is, just for clarification?
It's an easement agreement with N-Star, EverSource across the Hammond School. It's to put a hole in that location, um, Mr. Sullivan. If you'd like to elucidate on that anymore, that's fine.
No, it's um, they're doing some upgrades to the electrical system within onset due to they were having consistent outages. It's good for the community. Mr. Menard looked at the location and approved it.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, I'll accept a motion.
All right, I move for favorable action on the easement agreement with N-Star, EverSource at the Hammond School.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
No.
And myself, yes. Four, one, zero. Okay, any other articles that you choose to revisit?
Negative.
Okay. Then let's go back to the agenda. We've done we've done all under eight, right, Mr. Chadwick? Yep. And I have no business not anticipated within the past forty-eight hours after the posting. So I will go to Mr. Sullivan Town Administrator's Report, please, sir.
Did we wanna just go through, oh, nevermind.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on voting on the three that we haven't discussed, giving the petitioner an opportunity to come before us.
Okay.
If that's okay.
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am, chairperson. Uh, I forwarded the proposal from the engineering firm to perform the topographical analysis using GIS, historical and current uh, topographical surfaces. The comparative analysis between date sources and report outlining changes in volume from historic and current LiDAR data sets about the uh, earth removal. That originally was a petitioned article and then the Board of Select then brought it forward to uh, Article for Funding. And uh, we, we solicited some quotes on there and we've received one firm. We did go out of state on this uh, into Rhode Island. We looked at some some firms that weren't necessarily within the area, just to make sure that, that didn't uh, cast a cloud on anything. And uh, you know, we had some more favorable hits. So I just wanted to see if that's something the board is interested in uh, me moving forward on, as it was the board's article to fund it.
So let's recap a little bit. Um, this was an article that had been petitioned to a town meeting to make sure that the earth removal permits that we issue are in fact being followed to the letter of the permit. And that has been a question for a while. And so Mr. Sullivan went out to find somebody who could help us ascertain whether the earth removal is being done in accordance with the permitting or not. Um, and has moved forward with that. So is there any other discussion on the motion? On, on the uh, recommended, on the recommendation, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just for clarification for the public, uh, the, the concept of doing this is not just for those who, the one or two companies that actually has a permit that's filed and given us reports. It's also for areas that soil has been removed that we I'm going to use the word assume, which is not a good word, that if we find that the soil has been removed, that we'll be going after those particular entities for payment. Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding, Mr. Sullivan. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. It's not those that have, we only have one organization or one entity in town with an earth removal uh, permit, which is Graziano.
Yep.
Um, and there, there is nothing else at this point. Um, petition article came forth saying that there has been uh, earth removed from different projects, um, whether it was solar or other such. Um, and so this is to determine the amount and see and then work on whether it was done i- in accordance with our uh, Earth Removal Bylaw or not, so.
Okay, so Mr. Sullivan, you're looking for a motion from us to direct you to complete the circle and, and hire the firm?
Yeah, move forward uh, with the appropriation that we have and uh, see what we can get done and get a report delivered to you and then it's up to uh, to this board to what, what happens next.
Excellent. Mr. Chadwick?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yep.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, and then uh, if you, if you can, just put that as a confirmatory vote on the next uh, agenda. Um, I just wanted to make sure here from the board during the TA report as to whether you're interested in hearing on.
Yep.
Uh. Item number two, which will actually kind of coincides with um, with town meeting article for the uh, for the sewer department. Uh, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, so Mass DEP has reached out to us. As you know, we sort of, for lack of a better term, escaped the first phase of the TMDLs, which is the total maximum daily load. In other words, the amount of uh, you call it pollutants you could put into a water body before you, you harm it. What it can consist of. That's everything you've heard of that's going on in the Cape with uh, all the uproar. They've now come to Wareham and we will be in this phase. And they said, requested uh, set up a meeting, a public meeting. Uh, I think that's, it might be at their own peril, but they, they wanna have a public meeting. It's on November twenty-eighth. At two PM in room twenty-seven. Uh, we gave them, they, we asked them to give us some dates. We let them know what, what worked time wise between boards and these meetings and, and this is the date and times that uh, seemed to work for them.
And could you repeat the time again, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, I'll just go through it, the whole thing again.
Okay.
Twenty-eight. Two PM.
Two PM.
In room twenty-seven of the town hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What day is that?
I believe it's a Tuesday.
What's it relate, what's its relationship to Thanksgiving?
The week thereafter.
The week after, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sullivan, other items?
I only knew that cuz it was a food related item. Uh, and then we had a um, my citizens' comments, Miss Susan Noonan had reached out to us, um, and I just, I reviewed the, uh, I appreciate Wareham Community TV. Uh, I had a little trouble finding the uh, the uh, the, the broadcast, but they, they pointed out where it was, so on YouTube, so I appreciate that. I was going through it. We're getting a couple more answers, uh, but they, she had asked about a letter the board is sending, sending. That has not been sent yet. I know you're some additional input and uh, we'll certainly forward that and if you want, you can put it on the town's website when you, when you send it. Uh, she was asking about the veteran, the potentially that was thought, thought to be uh, excuse me, sought to be made into veterans housing. I know that the uh, Special Services Department had a problem with that twofold. It not being sprinklered, so it would have had to have been sprinklered, which I think the developer was interested in doing. But then the other thing was due to the small size of the rooms actually have it as housing. Um, even though potentially could be just for, for single people at that point. But it was uh, I know those were the two big hangups. Going back to the sprinkler, um, getting the information, I know that they have some things about that from being grandfathered in from the use, plus some um, I think some fire materials through the walls. But uh, I'll get that information and I should have that uh, for the next meeting. Maybe I'll do it after the town meeting one cuz some, to, to make sure that the reporting works on there. So uh, trying to uh, get those answers for, for Miss Noonan. I believe we hit all the main topics.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anything else, sir?
No, um, that is it. We look forward to uh, Monday, Monday town meeting, uh, should have the That is it. We look forward to, uh, Monday, Monday Town Meeting, uh, should have the motions out. Soon we put a few things on the consent agenda. There's at least two more articles than going through. I've double-checked to. Which we're going to end up passing over, um, so we'll see how, uh. Hopefully that, that will help, uh, help the meeting.
Thank you. Mister Slaven?
Uh, I would ask Mister Sullivan and obviously Town Council Bowen. Uh, we basically, where we are as far as, you know, the TMDL going to Buzzards Bay. The problem is we have communities north of us, uh, who may not have proper sewage or septic systems, et cetera. Uh, and their flow goes underground, obviously, and come to Wareham and goes out, and we get measured by what happens there. I would suggest that we come up with some kind of a. Proper argument that we should be some kind of compensation for stuff that we have no control over, yet we're gonna have to take care of, which I think is. Financially unfair. It's almost like a unfunded mandate coming down the line as usual. Uh, but there is a substantial amount that, that happens this way. And there's nobody, uh, no way to measure it per se, but we're gonna get penalized for it.
Thank you.
And I know this isn't a back and forth, but, you know, uh, I know from, from our. Health, the Director of Public Health, Patrick McDonald, we've given concerns with some of the datas, uh, over twenty years old. Um, some of it showed areas that were not, uh, not being sewed, that are sewed, uh. Yeah, I. Some of the same arguments came up along the Cape and the response was less than receptive. Uh, as in completely ignored, so, uh, we will go forward with our, our concerns. I have no problem with that. I don't, I. You know, we'll, we'll craft it. It's, when it comes down to the DEP, even if it's on your property, it's your problem. So, and that's where, but it's, uh, we have no problem, while I'm speaking for myself, but no problem drafting something and. Making as well-crafted arguments as possible. I just don't wanna give a false, uh, false hope on it.
Well, just so you know that, uh, MMA is looking into it as well, but also Serpent. Which has the twenty-seven communities and has all the communities on the west side of Buzzards Bay will be also. Funneling in that same issue as well. The, it's not a reasonable, uh, request, but it's not all theirs.
Thank you. Um, you, you're all set, Mister Sullivan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, liaison and initiative reports, Ms. Wertz?
Um, I don't have anything extra to support, just regular meetings, regular weeks.
Thank you, Mister Bessie.
Um, just quickly, um, I, uh, got a chance to, uh. Um, speak with the, the assessor's office this week, just to kind of touch base and see how things are going in that department, um. They're getting ready to get into their, uh, busy time, um, with, uh, reassessments of, uh. Of properties and values and things like that, um, and, uh, and I know that there are some, uh, some, some. Significant changes coming down the line from assessments, uh, as, uh, a lot of people might not know that, um. Assessed values of properties, um, generally take, uh, a couple of years to catch up to. Um, current values, so, uh, where assessed values might be low right now with the market high. Um, those assessed values are gonna change to kind of, uh, meet with the market and, uh, you know, they have the ebbs and flows, so, um. Just be prepared for, uh, differences in assessed values over, um, this year and, and, and next. Um, as the market has, obviously, as we know, gone through the roof with, uh, with, uh, sales and, and whatnot, and, um. With that, assessments are gonna change, and then, you know, they'll flow back and forth, but, uh, they're hitting the busy time and, uh. They're doing the best they can in that department with, uh, uh, keeping up with it and, uh, doing what they can to, uh, provide a good service, uh, to the town, so. Um, it was good to touch base with them and just to see where they're at, and, uh, you know, they're, uh, a little on the, the short-staffed side. Um, right now with, uh, some people being out, so, um, if you need anything from them, just please be patient. Um, they're doing the best they can to, uh, get you the information that you might be looking for, um, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mister Slaven.
Okay, real quick, uh, Mass Municipal Association, I sent everybody a forward. They have now a video library available. Uh, online for selectmen to go in and look at almost any subject that comes up. And the selectman has to deal with it. They have current and, uh, prior, uh, videos, so. It's something that we should keep also in the selectman's office with the, uh, contact information because it's. It, it's, uh, gives us institutional knowledge that we don't have on our own as a rule. Also, the MMA has their annual meeting in January. Any selectman, the finest committee member that wants to go to these meetings can go. Uh, and, uh. It's usually a pretty good, uh, take. You get to meet a lot of people, and there's also seminars during the two days, and I think there's a total of. Probably twelve or more different, uh, seminars available you can choose from. And last of all, uh, the state in their infinite wisdom, uh, with the, uh. Immigrant situation, et cetera, uh, has basically announced today and yesterday. That we're basically maxed out with having any places to bring people, uh, which is not a surprise because he didn't really think this out very clearly. Uh, and the real problem also is now is the financial issue of running out of money to take care of all this. So I'm hoping that Governor Baker's, uh, huge, uh. Surplus that he has in the stabilization fund doesn't disappear real quickly, because if it does. Uh, we'll be looking at, uh, shortfalls and monies in the next year to two years. That's it.
Thank you, Mister Chadwick?
Uh, none.
Thank you, and myself, none. Okay. We, yes.
Um, I thought, go back to, uh, uh, to select board member Slaven's, uh. Hey, uh, we, we have a bi-weekly meeting about the unsheltered, uh. Last week, it was canceled at the last minute because they had, uh, federal representatives in the Commonwealth. To go over funding and, um, for the, the, to help, help the state with all the costs. We did not hear any outcome from that meeting. Except we immediately, not immediately, but a few days later, received this notification that they will be capping at. Uh, seventy-five hundred families where they're at, you know, just under seven thousand now, so my. My, um, sneaky suspicion would be that they did not get a warm welcome from the federal delegation for receiving funds.
That's correct, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, um, we do still have itemed Articles twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, which were petitioned articles. Do you choose to take a stand on any one of them? We have not heard from the petitioner. She was invited.
I think we should, uh. Just move for favorable action on them, uh, just to put them on and let the town make the decision at town meeting.
May I have a motion then on Article twenty-nine, which is a gift of the bench?
Before that motion, I wanna understand what Jared means by just make a favorable. Is it, um. Abstain to favorable, four of, five votes? So how many of us there are, are, are for? What do you mean by having a favorable vote?
He must make a recommendation for favorable action. That is the way that we have to make the motion. If we all choose to vote for it, it would be five zero zero. If we all choose to vote against it, it would be zero.
So we'll go through the reg, the regular process, okay? Yep.
Thank you. Mister Chadwick, may I have the motion, please? Uh, and I, and I do wanna say that the petitioner has been invited more than once, so.
Oh. Before we make a motion, can I just ask, can we, can we vote no action on it?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I would recommend that's what we should do.
I, I, I think we should take no action because the petitioner didn't make themselves available. Um, and so we can't hear it other than what we're reading, so, I mean, I don't think we should do favorable or honor favorable. I think we should just take no action because. We, you know, we weren't given the opportunity to have the petitioner, uh, speak to their articles, and I think that we should just take no action.
Okay, uh.
One motion for all three, sir.
That's what I was about to ask.
You can. I move no action on articles.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. I move, uh, for no action on the petitioned articles of Gift of the Bench, number twenty-nine. Uh, number thirty petition article amend the charter and thirty-one petition article amend bylaws of affordable housing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to vote no action on those articles. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Yes.
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so that is the vote. Is there any other business to come before us? I think not.
Motion to adjourn.
Made and seconded to adjourn and is not a debatable motion, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
Mister Slaven?
Why not?
Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we are adjourned at eight o'clock. Thank you very much, Wareham, and good night. Thank you very much.